... meeting of August 8th, 2011. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams. Karen Berry. Mike Stites.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 25th, 2011?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion for approval seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion on the minutes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero with one abstention by Mrs. Sang.
Thank you. We have a few proclamations tonight and ceremonies, so I will run down to the podium. We have one proclamation, or actually an award to give tonight to Joyce Manwaring. This year we had our, the first annual Memories Car Show at Anderson Park. We had about 100 cars there. It was sponsored by a few friends that we know in the Corvette Club and Mustang Club. Anyway, Joyce was instrumental in having Anderson Park available. And like our goal is to have as many events in the city of Wheatridge so that were a destination rather than a pass-through city. So this was the first year they had it. They had about 100 cars down there, and Joyce was one of the judges. So they wanted to present Joyce with a plaque that says Memories, Spike, and Car Show. Thank you for your support. Parks and Recreation Director Joyce Manwaring, Wheatridge, Colorado.
I also had help judging from, I believe, Mrs. Rotowski, Mrs. Wheatridge, the mayor himself, and Mr. Demott. And we had a great time. So it was wonderful to have the car show in Anderson Park. Everyone had a great time, and it was a fun morning. Hot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joyce. Our next proclamation will be the Wheatridge Carnation Festival. Ask Mrs. Wheatridge to please step forward and read the proclamation. And we have some of the committee members from the Carnation Festival. We have a check for you two, so Sherry and company, please step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheatridge. Good evening. Whereas the Wheatridge Carnation Festival, an annual event, is celebrating its 42nd year, and whereas the Carnation Festival is a series of events in the community commemorating the history and traditions of Wheatridge and celebrating our citizens, businesses, and service organizations, and whereas the Carnation Festival mission is to showcase a Wheatridge-specific community celebration featuring all the uniqueness and positive energy that our city and its residents have to offer through a broad-based and diverse effort, and whereas just a few of the events scheduled for the two-day Carnation Festival at Anderson Park, 44th Avenue, and Field Street, Friday and Saturday include nightly concerts in the park, various contests and booths, artistic and cultural events and displays, and events for kids of all ages, and whereas the festival includes a fireworks extravaganza at Anderson Park on Friday and Saturday night, and a parade on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. along 38th Avenue. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor and city council, I do hereby proclaim August 14th through 21st, 2011, Carnation Festival week. And witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and seal of the city of Wheatridge this 9th day of August, 2011.
So congratulations on another successful year, I'm assuming, and hoping forward there'll rain. But we have a check here for $12,500 for the Carnation Festival Committee to move forward with all the events. Do you want to say a few words, Sherry? Or Margie?
Actually, we do. We want to give you the biggest thank you for once again supporting us in the festival. And I have to tell you, Margie and I decided after the last festival that we just weren't going to take any time off. And so she and I have continued meetings since the last festival just almost every single week. She is a fireball, and she has just been a blessing. She came on as my co-chair this festival, and I could not have done without her the things that we are accomplishing. And I have to tell you, we have really expanded, thanks to Margie Seifer, really expanded all of the children's activities. So there will be a lot of children activities and free events for them. We are doing two nights of fireworks again because, you know, when we had the birthday party for Wheatridge, we do two nights of fireworks. The next year, last year, everyone said, "Well, okay, so you're not doing fireworks tomorrow night, too?" And it became this really big deal. So we said, "You know what? We're going to do some more fundraising." And we have done that. And I have to tell you, we have the largest amount of big sponsors that we have ever had for the festival. We have brought in a lot of new donors and sponsors. So I just am very excited. It has become this huge community event. Last year, we had over 20,000 people in the two days, and we are expecting even more. So thank you to the entire city of Wheatridge, all of the citizens, and to the council and mayor for the great support that you've given us.
Sherry and I are determined. This city deserves a great festival. Other cities have it. We've struggled with it. It's not going to be a struggle anymore. We guarantee all of you, you come to this festival, by the way, please come and press flesh with your citizens. We will have a, we have a new welcome booth. It says "Welcome" on the one end. It's just an amazing booth. It's white. It's 20 by 10. We're going to have students from Wheatridge High School band boosters there greeting our citizens as they arrive on the midway. I invite all of you and any city employee to come and stand with those students, press flesh, tell them who you are. They don't know who all of you are. This gives you a great opportunity to come and say, "Hi, I'm Mayor DiTulio. I'm councilperson Joyce J." Come and say hi to your, greet your citizens and be there with us. We are going to put on one heck of a party in this city in two weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it. And like we've talked about, is having Wheatridge as a destination location for parks and rec, for festivals, parades, restaurants, different types of business, or the rec center is a goal that we've had for the last few years, and we need to market our city as much as we can. And one of the things I wanted to bring up next is the Traffic Safety and Awareness Month proclamation. Anecdotally, you'll hear a lot of stories about speeding in neighborhoods, and while the, I talked to the chief about this, that there's not a data, a lot of data that says speeding is going on by neighbors in your own neighborhood, there's a lot of stories where you see that they are. And so we're trying to work for a Traffic Safety Awareness Month where we'll be looking at red light running, turning left on reds, neighborhood awareness of traffic problems at the high school also. And so this week is September 2011 will be the Safety Traffic Month. So I wanted to ask Mrs. Wheatridge to read the proclamation and have our chief come and talk about our new program that we'll be implementing in September of this year.
Whereas in 2010, there were 1,412 traffic collisions resulting in three fatalities and 167 injuries in the city of Wheatridge, and whereas speeding, speeding in school zones, aggressive driving, inattentive driving, and red light running are significant problems in Wheatridge and throughout the United States, and whereas the protection and safety of every motorist, including new drivers under the age of 18, traveling through the city of Wheatridge is of utmost importance, and whereas Mayor Jerry DiTulio and the Wheatridge Police Department are committed to reducing traffic collisions, injuries, and fatalities on our roadways through the analysis of the proximate causes of traffic collisions, education, and directed enforcement efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Wheatridge do hereby proclaim the month of September as Wheatridge Traffic Safety Awareness Month, and reaffirm the city of Wheatridge's commitment to education and enforcement of those unsafe traffic behaviors and violations that result in traffic collisions, and express our appreciation to the members of the Wheatridge Police Department for their proactive work in education and enforcement efforts that help reduce traffic collisions in the city of Wheatridge, and witness thereof on this 8th day of August, 2011.
Mayor and council, about six weeks ago, the mayor and I were having a discussion about traffic concerns that he had heard from residents. And during the course of that discussion, we talked about how could we do something proactive in our community as it pertains to traffic safety. And one of the things that we discussed was actually doing a proclamation and setting aside a specific time of the year where we could really, as a city and as a police department, talk about traffic safety, what are the causes of traffic accidents, you know, how can we educate the youth in our community and the residents and the visitors to our community about traffic education? And part of this came out of some of the service requests that we get. I know you as elected officials, the mayor, hear lots of times from citizens and neighborhoods about speeding vehicles. When school starts, we're going to hear a lot of complaints about speeders in, you know, school zones and, you know, the parking issues that are associated with that. And we do get complaints because of some of our new teenage drivers, you know, as they, you know, go to school and they drive in the neighborhoods, and we respond to that. And then frankly, we've got a lot of major intersections in state highways that run through our city. So we've identified already some of the high-traffic accident locations in the city. So as a result of sort of this collaborative discussion in terms of what we thought we could do as a city, we came up with the following strategy. One was to devote the month of August to sort of education around the idea of traffic safety. And we are going to put information on our website. We're going to be doing a video. We're going to put information on Channel 8, where you get information into the Connections newsletter, Mayor's Matters, and use a press release in regards to the declaration of the month of September as a way to let citizens know that we take traffic safety seriously, and here's what we want to try to do to make our roadways safer. Then the second part of that is we're going to, we'll be meeting with school principals tomorrow. We're going to talk to the school principals about how the schools can assist us in getting information to parents and information to student drivers in regards to traffic safety and some of the violations that we see around our school zones in an effort to sort of have a collaborative relationship with PTAs and schools and student drivers that we see out there. And then in the month of September, we are going to start a directed enforcement program. Now September's a pretty busy month from a traffic safety perspective. Anyway, we do a lot of click it and ticket, and we have over Labor Day weekend, the Heat is On campaign. So in conjunction with those two campaigns, we're going to do some directed enforcement with our crime and traffic team as well as our patrol officers to really focus on those violations that cause accidents, whether that's red light violations, failure to stop for, you know, traffic signals, following too closely, those kinds of violations. We're also going to focus around our school zones to try to make those safer for our kids that are walking to and from school. And we're also going to then focus on speeding overall, because speeding tends to be one of the larger proximate causes for accidents that we have in the city. So we're going to really do an enforcement effort around that, and then after that's all done, we'll sort of gauge our effectiveness and how well we've done on that. So we're looking forward to breaking new ground and doing this, and hopefully it'll be something where, on an annual basis, we'll do a formal proclamation and a directed enforcement effort and education as it pertains to traffic safety. So thank you for your help on this and your assistance, and anything you can do to spread the word in the community in regards to this, we'd appreciate it.
The last thing I wanted to mention is, I didn't expect to see him here tonight, but we have a great school resource officer at Wheatridge High School. This will be his second year, I believe. He's made a huge impact with the students, working with the students, and getting to know them, working with administration, the teachers. So I wanted just counsel to acknowledge that we have Barry Malloy here, who's been a great school resource officer at Wheatridge High School. So I want a round of applause for Mr. Malloy. So move on to citizens' right to speak. Please step forward. If you'd like to speak on anything not on the agenda, please spell your last name for the record and give us your city and/or your address. This is anything not on the agenda tonight.
Jerry, is this the budget?
No.
Oh. Well, we have citizens' right to speak. That's coming up.
I know I get that, but I want to be clear, because I'm not sure we're not getting a budget.
No, this is actually for public comment, for citizens' right to speak. So please step forward on anything not on the agenda. The public input for the budget is actually on the agenda, so.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Zachary Urban. Many of you know me based on my involvement in helping try to save Martinston Elementary School from closure. I've been a columnist in the Neighborhood Gazette. I've also been shoveling snow for some of our senior citizens with the newly-formed Wheatridge Snowshovel Brigade. And I also am very familiar with Barry Malloy. He actually gave me my very first ticket when I was in high school. So I come here tonight to announce my bid for Wheatridge City Council in District 2, and I've been fortunate enough to be knocking on doors already and talking to citizens about what some of their concerns are, and glad to hear that their concerns are many of my same concerns. If you want to know more information about my campaign, you can go to Zach Urban dot org for more details. And just to give you a couple of ideas about things that I think we can do as a city to move the ball down the field is providing young families and hard-working families in Wheatridge with a sales tax holiday, two weekends a year, to provide an ability to buy school supplies without any sales tax. And it's not to eliminate the sales tax altogether, but just for those two weekends, just a small token to be able to help out those families that need that help around getting school supplies. I just went to a couple shops around town and looked at some of the prices on school supplies, and they've just gone through the roof. So I think that could help out a lot as well. I think we could look at producing and developing some kind of Wheatridge landlord school to coordinate with the Realtors Association, apartment associations, and really teach student, or landlords about what it means to be a good landlord. So those are just a couple of the examples of things I'd like to do, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, and look forward to seeing you all on Wheatridge knocking on doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record and give us your city and/or your address.
Not my first name. My first name's Claudia. My last name's Worth, W-O-R-T-H. And I'm representing the Wheatridge Historical Society. I'm vice president, and inviting you and all citizens in Wheatridge, we're having Heritage Days Saturday. And we, last year, we tried it on the Carnation Festival. That didn't work out so well. So we're introducing the Carnation Festival with Heritage Day, and I want to specifically thank Joyce Manwaring for working with us on the Ba House. It's finished, and we are now in the process of decorating the interior, hanging curtains, and looking for the period artifacts and things like that. I think we're going to have a, I'm getting astray here, but I think we're going to have one of the large antique dinners in Denver has offered to furnish the parlor for us. So it's going to be exciting. Heritage Days is an annual affair that we started, I think, two years ago, but I can't remember. And we're going to be offering root beer floats and homemade ice cream, and I think there'll be hot dogs, but I'm not sure. And we're featuring the O'Brien family band, the O'Brien family band. They've played in the park before, and they're going to be entertaining from 1:00 to 3:00. And it's just an old-fashioned day. Come, all you politicians, and meet some of your people. The O'Briens draw a really good crowd from Wheatridge. Last time they played last year, I think at Anderson, there was probably over 500 people there. So good opportunity for y'all to come. We'd love to see you. And you need to come and see the Ba House. It's probably the most pristine restoration in the whole state of Colorado. It is, we are so proud of it. Bill Bailey, the contractor, and Lee Callis, the project manager, just did a fantastic job on it, and we're very proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Slattery, S-L-A-T-T-E-R-Y. Do you need my address?
Mr. City or your address?
6869 West 32nd Avenue. I am representing Wheatridge United Neighborhoods, and on behalf of the organization, I would like to request your permission to use the city council chamber and the city television facilities for our forum for the upcoming city election. We'd like to do something a little different this year. We will have the usual maximum of five questions for each council candidate, a minimum of three each for the treasurer and city clerk, but we would like to solicit input citywide, ask people to submit proposed questions. The pool that we get will boil down to maybe eight or 10, which we will make public prior to the forum. Of that pool, we will select the five by drawing them from a hat at the forum. We think this will add a fresh touch to the whole procedure. Our understanding is the available dates for the chamber are the 27th to the 30th of September inclusive, and October 5th, October 7th. The ballots are expected to be sent October 11th, so we would prefer that last week of September, preferably the 29th. We do understand there may be another activity that night, in which case we would take either the 28th or the 30th. So we hope you will grant us a favorable decision on this and grant it this evening. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and citizens of Wheatridge. My name's Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O. I live at 4070 Dover Street, 80033. I'm here to promote another Wheatridge Live Local, Wheatridge 2020 Live Local event. In addition to the great work the city's doing to promote our wonderful city to those outside the boundaries who need to come in and learn about us, we continue to work to promote our businesses and our city to those who live here. And Live Local events, which are held the second Thursday of each month, are continuing to grow by word of mouth, and the businesses continue to enjoy the opportunity to bring citizens in and support Wheatridge 2020. So our next event is this Thursday, the 11th, at Noodles &amp; Company up on Youngfield, 32nd and Youngfield, from 6:00 to 9:00, and we hope you all join us. I brought council members flyers, and I've provided additional flyers at the back of the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this is breaking protocol and all that, but the Ba House is located at 44th and Robb Street. I lived there, you know? I'm sorry, I just assume everybody knows where it is. It's Cross Park, Prospect Park, watch for the water tower, and the teepee that will be in the front of the house somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome, Jerry.
Do we have anybody else here for public comment before we move on to the agenda? Seeing none, the first item on the agenda tonight is public input on the budget. So please step forward if you'd like to speak on the budget tonight. This is item number one. You can speak on any item on the budget. It's open season. And please spell your last name for the record and your city and your address, or your address.
Right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lloyd Levy. My last name is spelled L-E-V-Y. I live at 3275 Upland Street in Wheatridge. And I'm here on behalf of Wheatridge 2020 to urge you to fund the comp plan's vision for 38th Avenue in the 2012 budget. Much effort has been put into the comp plan and its vision for the future, and now the focus is on implementation. And the 38th Avenue subarea plan is a priority. And to make that happen, we think that the 2012 budget specifically should include enough resources for the city and for Wheatridge 2020 to play their parts in implementation. First, funding for the city. There are some things on 38th Avenue that only the city can do. Implementing a Main Street district and the road diet will require city investments for capital improvements and for public works, so the budget should include resources for these investments. Second is funding for Wheatridge 2020. 2020 is to have a central role in implementing the 38th Avenue plans by doing outreach and organizing the Main Street task force. And Wheatridge 2020 will need staffing resources to do these jobs. Additionally, to foster continued improvement by businesses along 38th Avenue, it's important to fund Wheatridge 2020's loan and grant programs. These help businesses do bigger improvements faster than is possible otherwise. To sum up, the budget needs to include dollars to keep the ball rolling on three things: capital improvements and public works for 38th Avenue, a grant to Wheatridge 2020 for its work on Main Street implementation, and a grant to Wheatridge 2020 for building up business and home investment loan programs. We've come a long way in envisioning the city's future, and it's time now to invest our tax dollars in the people and the projects that will make the vision a reality.
Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street. Thanks yet again for an opportunity to speak to you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and in fact, all city leadership staff as well. I'd like to contribute some thoughts on the budget. Budgets can sound boring to many, but these numbers tell a story. In this case, the budget will tell the story of hopes, dreams, and priorities for the city of Wheatridge. As you know, there are many documents that tell of these hopes and plans for our community. You have dedicated many, many hours to the passage of our comprehensive plan, mixed-use zoning, subarea plans, and more, and all great work. Thank you. As I look to this next budget, I want to see the story that Wheat, see the story that Wheatridge is serious about making good on those plans you've worked so hard on. In the past, we have adopted plans and done some budget alignment, but time and many other factors, the economy and others, have intervened. As a founding member of the Board of Directors of Wheatridge 2020, I've been disappointed to see our funding to this organization cut from the grand plans and grants originally promised. Things have changed, and Wheatridge 2020 has indeed adapted. Wheatridge 2020 is still delivering quality programs, great advocacy for our city's plans, and a hope and a movement for the Wheatridge that can be. I know Wheatridge 2020 can do even more with the continued support from the city of Wheatridge. At a recent Live Local event, some of the neighbors gathered were talking with enthusiasm about the changes happening on 38th Avenue. Our community is noticing the impact of the efforts to incentivize development and investments along 38th Avenue. While it can't all happen overnight, projects like Compass Construction, Ceviche, Crest and Crest Kitchen and Bath provide great movement forward and inspire their neighbors to follow suit. It's important to stay the course and fund Wheatridge 2020. Not only its popular loan programs or the Wheatridge Business District Grant Program that Wheatridge 2020 staffs, but also support for the staffing it takes to deliver these programs, the resources necessary to putting on great events like the Realtor Tour, the Mid-Century and Modern Tour, wines and dines, and the monthly Live Local events. Wheatridge 2020 is adding to the local buzz about what a great city we are and what a great city we can continue to work towards. We're getting neighbors out, and they're spending money locally. Wheatridge 2020 remains the best symbol and activator that Wheatridge is working to change. So please, make this budget, this budget story, reflect what I see in the faces of the Wheatridge 2020 members, the promise of what we can do together to make Wheatridge even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here to speak on the budget tonight, public input? I was just informed Mr. Stites wanted to make a motion under citizens' right to speak, and we missed that, but council can make a motion anytime really they want to. So Mr. Stites?
Yeah, just so he doesn't have to sit there all night long. I'd like to make a motion that I'd like to make a motion that we make the chamber and the TV available to United Neighbors for their candidate forum on whatever day you can work out with the staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion to allow Wheat United Neighborhoods to use the council chambers and Channel 8, and they should work with staff on those dates. Second by Councilmember Demott, discussion on the motion. Please poll the council.
And the motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. So seeing no other folks here for public input on the budget, we'll move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Council Bill 23-2011, I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 23-2011, an ordinance amending Chapters 4 and 17 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning animals running at large and adopting off-leash dog park rules and regulations. The city council has been considering the creation and appropriate regulation of off-leash dog parks within the city for several months. This ordinance authorizes the creation of off-leash dog parks and amendment and removal of the same at council's direction and adopts rules and regulations to govern the use of such parks. The Wheat Ridge Rotary Club has donated $5,000 for construction of the dog parks, and $20,000 is currently appropriated in the open space fund budget for the off-leash dog parks. This ordinance does two things. It authorizes the city council to direct the creation, alteration, and removal of off-leash dog parks upon city property, and it establishes rules and regulations governing any off-leash dog parks in existence. This approach permits council to add and subtract off-leash dog parks in the future as it deems fit and to alter the boundaries of such parks in the future without going through an ordinance process. Is the motion in order?
Now, we're in the public hearing, so we'll have to, the city clerk to assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 23-2011 will be assigned ordinance number 1490.
Do we have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
Not beyond the summary unless you have questions.
Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussions and questions? Just Jay? Do you have a question? Oh. Going to close the public hearing and a motion's in order?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 23-2011, an ordinance amending various provisions of Chapters 4 and 17 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning animals running at large and adopting off-leash dog park rules and regulations on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval with second by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 3 is Council Bill 24-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Council Bill Number 24-2011.
Mr. Reinhardt, can you use your mic?
Thanks. Council Bill Number 24-2011 is an ordinance concerning appeals from decisions of the director of public works, an ordinance providing for a right of appeal of the Board of Adjustment for certain decisions of the director of public works and repealing obsolete provisions of Chapter 13 in connection therewith. Your honor, I'd like to move to continue the hearing until September 12th to allow for planning commission hearings in advance of that.
Okay, is there a second? Before we vote on the motion to continue, we need an ordinance number?
Council Bill 24-2011 will be assigned ordinance number 1497.
Thank you. And the motion is to continue this September 12th, public hearing. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. Item 4 is Council Bill 25-2011. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yeah, it's my pleasure to introduce Council Bill Number 25-2011, an ordinance approving a planned commercial development, specific outline development plan on the property located at 7495 West 29th Avenue, case number WZ1104-MCPN. The applicant is requesting approval and amendment to the planned commercial development specific outline development plan for the property located on 7495 West 29th Avenue. The case is proceeded as specific outline development plan, ODP, which establishes development standards as well as preliminary site planning for the property and architecture of the structure. If approved, the applicant can proceed to the administrative final development plan, platting and building permit. The planning commission recommended approval of this requested a public hearing held on July 21, 2011. Adoption of the attached council bill on first reading sets the public hearing to consider the specific outline development plan on September 12, 2011. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 25-2011, an ordinance approving and a request for a planned commercial development specific outline development plan for the property located at 7495 West 29th Avenue on first reading. Order it published with public hearing set for Monday, September 12, 2011, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval on first reading, second by Councilmember Berry. Please poll the council.
He didn't hear you.
I even waited.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Let's see. Item 5 is Council Bill 26-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 26-2011, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to the voters of the city pursuant to Charter Section 16.8B, setting the ballot title and giving notice and call of an election concerning the same. The city attorney's office recently advised charter that Charter Section 15.6A, which requires an election prior to awarding of any franchise in the city, would be in violation of federal law as it relates to cable franchises. Specifically, the concern was that requiring an election prior to awarding of a cable franchise might violate the Federal Cable Act. Following a council study session on the issue, the council decided to initiate a charter amendment pursuant Charter Section 16.8B. The proposed amendment to Charter Section 15.6A does not conflict with federal law by specifically exempting cable franchises from the election requirement. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 26-2011, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to the voters of the city pursuant to Section 16.8B, setting the ballot title and giving notice and call of an election concerning the same on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, August 22, 2011, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Demott, on first reading. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item 6 is Council Bill 27-2011. Councilmember Jay?
Council Bill Number 27-2011 is an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning annexation of real property to the city. At issue is the ordinance adopting procedures for annexation and de-annexation of real property. The Wheat Ridge Code of Laws does not currently specify procedures for annexation of property to or de-annexation of property from the city. The proposed ordinance incorporates state statutory procedures and requires council approval by ordinance for any de-annexation.
Motion in order? Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 27-2011, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning annexation of real property to the city on first reading. Order published hearing set for Monday, September 12, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, or that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number 6 on first reading, with second by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council.
And the motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item 7 is Resolution 22-2011. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 22-2011, a resolution authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, and the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 1, 2011. The city clerk is going to read the summary for me.
Thank you. The city of Wheat Ridge will participate in the coordinated election of November 1, 2011. The attached resolution and intergovernmental agreement must be executed prior to the election. Documents refer to the respective duties of the county and the city of Wheat Ridge regarding the administration of their duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election. The duties of the county clerk include, but are not limited to, ballot preparation, voter lists, staff selection and training, providing election supplies, counting ballots, and certification of results. The duties of the city of Wheat Ridge include, but are not limited to, call and notice and ballot preparation. The city clerk shall act as the city of Wheat Ridge's election officer and the designated election official. He shall act as the primary liaison between the city of Wheat Ridge and the contact officer for the county clerk and recorder. The city of Wheat Ridge shall pay its prorated share of election cost for all election services. The city's prorated cost shall be determined in accordance with the formula set forth in Exhibit A attached to and incorporated into this agreement. That's it.
Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 22-2011, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Jefferson regarding the administration of the respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 1, 2011.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Adams. Discussion on item number 7? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 8 is Resolution 23-2011. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. Resolution Number 23-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,850 for the renewal of the WRTV 8 scheduling software.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 23-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,850 for the renewal of the WRTV 8 scheduling software.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on item 8? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to city managers' matters. I know you have some good things to talk about.
I do. I have a few updates I would like to give to the mayor and city council and also our citizens. As part of the city's environmental sustainability efforts, we are conducting two energy audits, one of our active adult center. And those funds for that audit came from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. We received a grant for this audit, and the audit has been completed. There's been several recommendations for upgrades, so staff will be bringing those items back to city council during the budget process. Also, we're conducting an energy audit of our recreation center. This is also being done for free. The architect of our recreation center has recommended a new group called Group 14 to use our recreation center as kind of one of their first audits. And they've done their initial tour, and they're going to make some recommendations also for the recreation centers, so. Also, we've been talking about this a lot lately, but our police department has been going through the national accreditation process, and it's finally official. The police department has received its national accreditation from Kalia, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Very proud of this. It's, there's less than 10% of law enforcement agencies across North America have this recognition, and this really just shows our police department's commitment to excellence and professionalism. So congratulations to the police department. And Commander Jim Lawrence is the accreditation manager, and he coordinated this process, so a lot of good work. And then finally, just a quick update on our recreation center. We have our annual closure week for cleaning and maintenance is August 22 through the 26th. It's a Monday through Friday. We have made arrangements with the city of Golden for our patrons to use their recreation center during that week, so you should be able to find information on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. City attorneys' matters?
Not for me, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Sang? Councilmember Berry? Councilmember Reinhardt?
Nope.
Councilmember Demott? Councilmember Jay?
Well, let me jump in here.
Thank you.
I've got two things, and I'm hoping the rest of the city council will help me with one of them, because I didn't bring the details with me. But I'm pretty sure tomorrow evening is the 38th Avenue, the meeting on 38th Avenue for citizens, and I believe it's being held at the recreation center, right? Times 6:30. Very, very important for our citizens to get in there and get in your two cents worth, because we are really narrowing this down and considering some wonderful possibilities for 38th Avenue. The second one is, you thought I was going to shut up, but I'm not. The second one is for the Carnation Festival, which is coming up very soon here and very exciting. As we did last year, we're having a chili cook-off, and we are asking the restaurants, restaurant owners, if you would like some advertising that only costs you two gallons of chili, this would be the place to do it, because you'll be judged by the chili eaters and lots of recognition. So I'll be coming around and banging on your doors and saying, "Bring your recipe in and bring your two gallons of chili." All right, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. The parade's coming this month, the 20th, so I'd ask that all businesses on 38th please clean up their parking lots and their lots and any homes down there. Whack! For that matter, we ought to clean up the whole city and put our good, you know, our best foot forward, but especially on 38th for the parade. It's an excellent time to relocate your business or your home to Wheat Ridge, and if you need any help, ask one of us or staff. They'd be happy to let you know how to do that. Please try to do one positive thing, either for yourself, your family, your neighbors. There's a lot of weeds popping up around this town, and we need to take care of that, so I would suggest you do it before code enforcement shows up, and they will. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Yes, just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to thank Chief Brennan and the police for our national night out on August 1st. It held out on the rain through most of the function. I think I was heading over for city council, and it looked like it might be starting. And then also, to reiterate, August 22 is the first day of school, and we're going to have a lot of kids back on the streets, walking to school, riding their bikes, so let's try to not hit them, because we really want them growing up and being great citizens of Wheat Ridge, so watch out for the kids.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for that public announcement. We don't want to hit any kids on.
I've seen some of these people die.
Also, I just wanted to thank all of our candidates who are running for city council, city clerk, and city treasurer. If you are a citizen and you're not running and you'd like to know who they are, check out the city clerk's website on the city website to see the candidates. Contact those candidates if you're interested in knowing more about them. I've had the pleasure of meeting most of the candidates, either for breakfast or coffee or something. It's great to see we have a great number of candidates coming in that are very well meaningful with the city of Wheat Ridge and wanting to move things forward, so that's great for the city of Wheat Ridge. I wanted to also thank, again, the Parks Department and the folks who put on the car show down at Anderson Park. There's two car shows that you'd normally come, well, there's one car show that normally comes to Wheat Ridge, and they use Fruitdale. They have about 300 cars, and they actually attended the Anderson Park Show on Sunday, and they like to move their car show to Anderson also, because the Fruitdale Park will be getting a new dog park. So we got these types of events, bring customers into our city. And the biggest thing is, is these folks spend money, they shop in Wheat Ridge, they go to the restaurants, they go to the gas stations, they go to wherever in the city, and they spend money in the city of Wheat Ridge. And so we're a destination rather than a pass-through city, and that's my goal for the next few years, is to make sure that people are coming here for events rather than just passing through to somebody else. If you notice that Golden is one of the biggest cities in our Jeffco that has an event almost every weekend, whether it's a car show, a festival, a parade, or some kind of event, Golden is really pushing their city through tourism or being a destination. And so I really appreciate the fact that we can do that here in the city of Wheat Ridge. We're centrally located, so it's exciting. I also wanted to thank the police department, who are working with us on the Red Light Don't Fight program. The bottom line is, is if you see people speeding and The bottom line is, is if you see people speeding in your neighborhood, generally speaking, it's somebody who lives in your neighborhood, and that's what's frustrating, is that your own neighbors are speeding through your blocks. That's a danger to your children, to yourself, and to pets, so really, be careful when you're driving through your neighborhoods and just really stop speeding. I mean, the speed limit in most residential neighborhoods is 25 to 30 miles an hour. We will have checkpoints where people will be stopped if they're speeding or running a red light at the major intersections like at Wadsworth and Kipling, 38th and 44th. And you know how it is, you're turning left, or someone's turning left, and they're turning left, and they're turning left, and the light was red a long time ago for the left, for the green light. So the police will be there in September trying to do selective enforcement to make everybody safe and aware of what's going on in the city of Wheat Ridge, and a lot of them are Wheat Ridge residents. So think twice before you turn left on a red or run on a red light. So that's about it, and I would like to say once again, school does start August 22, so you'll see a lot of activities wrapping up, so again, traffic needs to be cautious. Pedestrians and drivers need to be cautious of each other when they're crossing the street driving through school zones. So with that, we're adjourned.